So today, we have a slide program that actually Reverend Bobby put together for her church. And Gina Overholt and I got together over Friday and Saturday and kind of maneuvered a few things. But it's a shorter version. It's what I call the Cliff Notes or the Reader's Digest Guide to what we have been doing and what we can look forward to. So if we could have the first slide, okay, collaboration roadmap. Then if we go to the second slide, the introduction. And I love the quote there. "If we wish to center into a less limited experience, we must sacrifice our limitations." Those thoughts that are limiting us, saying, "Oh, we don't have this, oh, we don't have..." Doesn't do any good. We have to let go of those, trust in the process, and be open at the top. Next slide. Why do we collaborate? You can read all those little boxes up there, but the bottom line is a combination... COVID has changed our society. Religious communities were already starting to shrink before... It's the internet. It's the everything. It's YouTube. It's all the stuff that's out there. So churches, communities, churches were shrinking prior to COVID. And then with COVID was the big shrink. I mean, we look around and we are not the only... We had a new visitor from... That has just moved to California from Florida. And she said, "Yeah, the same thing's happening in Florida. All the communities are getting smaller. And we're all trying to decide what to do with it." And that is why we are collaborating, is trying to find solutions that maybe haven't been used before. So let's go to the next slide. This was something that was surprising to me until I thought about it. Our head office is also struggling because I think close to 90% of the money they get are tithes from all of our communities. And I would imagine all the communities have shrunk to a certain extent. And many are very small, some are closing, which is very, very sad. But when that happens, they get less money and they're dealing with their issues right now. And I hold them in prayer, knowing that they will find their way through this experience that we are experiencing. And to me, it also gives us an opportunity to reinvent ourselves, if you will, to be successful in this new environment that we have. So let's go to the next slide. So here are why people are leaving. You know, you've got... Pick your choice. Some people just got used to watching the service in their pajamas. Some people have found something on the internet. Some people have found, who knows, all whatever kinds of things. I personally love the coming together physically, the eyeball to eyeball, that being able to hug, the being able to really feel the community. Yes, you can get some of it through Zoom, but it's not the same as being here. And I think most people will say that the experience of being here is just, I get more out of it. I get more out of it. There are many reasons why people are not coming back. And we have an opportunity to soul-search and look at new ways to align ourselves with what people need and want. We have this opportunity, this unique opportunity, that I think is just amazing. So the next slide. This is kind of showing you where we came from. At the very bottom, you see competition. That's where, you know, you're vying for who's going to get this person and who's going to... "I want this person in our group and I want..." So cooperation is one level up. And we have cooperated with other centers and let you know when they have a function and they've let their congregation know when we have their function. But, you know, that really doesn't... It's pretty surface. Then we get to collaboration. And that's what we find out, that we can do more if we do it together. Now, our big collaboration was Adventure and Faith. And Adventure and Faith was put together by... The curriculum was put together by a group of practitioners from Seal Beach and practitioners from Namaste. They put the curriculum together. We presented it. We had 74 people participate in Adventures in Faith. One, Sylvia, told Tanya Brown, who wrote the book, that we had that many. She said, "Oh my God, I didn't think you'd get more than 30." And that is just the product. Now, I had some hesitation about, "Oh, how are we going to mix?" And I'll even throw out, you know, we've been known as the old, old white church. And they're known as the gay young church. Now, you know full well, and after we've been with them now on two different occasions, what I thought might be an issue turned out to be no issue. We just got together and we were just people coming together, having a good time. It was like having a family reunion. I was just amazed at how quickly we melded in that first collaborative experience. So the next step, potential step, is co-creation. And this is what we're going to begin embarking on, with everyone's permission, with a sense of everyone consent, with a sense of consensus. So we are going to put forth... Co-creation is going to involve Namaste and Seal Beach exploring. We're not going to make any decisions, but we're going to explore the possibilities and the opportunities we have if we come together with Namaste in some form. We're not going to... We're not making any decisions right now. We're going to set up... Well, let's go to the next slide. Yeah, well, we sort of talked about this one. I got ahead of myself. You look at that. You know, we can stay as we are. And in all honesty, what we have, in my opinion, is not sustainable. We are working with primarily volunteers. And yes, it works for now, but we're not going to be able to continue forever and ever. This will not work. And we do need a senior minister. I love having the various speakers that we have, but we need a senior minister that's... Yeah, we need a senior minister, in my opinion. So what we're putting forth now is the bottom one there. An opportunity of unifying in some way and sharing our gifts, rather than trying to make it our own or doing a little collaboration here, a little collaboration there. We're going to explore that. So the next slide. Questions we must ask. What would our congregation be better by coming together rather than remaining separate? What would be better? Could we accomplish more together than separately? Would our community be better served together than separately? Do we do this together or separately and why? Personal growth, opportunities, potential for new models of ministry? What I'm going to invite you to do right now is to maybe just somebody sitting near you, just share your experiences with any of those questions and what your sense is with that at this point, so I can see if somebody finding... Just take a couple of minutes to chat with someone about, would it be better? Yeah, I know. I know. I know. I know. Okay. Oh, the problem is I've got... Yeah, I'm a little bit, because I've got... I'll try to come over here when I read.
Well, if you can, can you move that over? Because when you go over this way, you're not in line with the microphone. So if you can be in line as best you can.
Okay. All right, let's come back together. And I've got a mic runner.
Can you move the microphone a little bit?
Yeah, okay. I thought so. Okay. Oh. I've got two things. One thing I forgot to do. I'm going to ask Diane to give everybody a three-by-five card. If you think of a question that you would like to ask after the slide presentation, I will answer the questions to the best of my ability. So she's going to give you that. And Gina Overholt is going to be the mic runner. So would anybody like to share what, after we get the sirens? Yeah. Would anybody like to share what came up here?
So I've been going to both services, both here and Namaste, for the last month or so. And one thing that I noticed, even though they have Reverend Bobby as their senior minister there, is that when Reverend Bobby is not speaking, half their congregation doesn't show up. And then the person that speaks is really not that dynamic and doesn't hold the attention. And that's probably why they're not coming, is because they know if Reverend Bobby's not there, the energy's not going to be there. So I think through collaboration, we would be able to share our pool of dynamic speakers like the one we had this week and offer that, you know, in collaboration, so that they would be able to keep that energy going or even have a minister retreat or something where they can say, "You know, we can help you to really connect with your congregation." Because there's... Speaking and giving an inspirational speech is an art. But that's been my observation, is they're struggling in a different way, even though they have a senior minister. When she's not there and she's taking a break, which she has to, the energy's not there and neither's her congregation.
Would anybody else like to summarize their thoughts?
My concern is basically on numbers. Our congregation is a diminishing return due to age. And we need some, as the vampire said, we need some fresh blood. And I think with the fresh blood, we get some extra energy. And that's what makes a congregation expand. Bottom line, I don't think we really have a choice but to come together. I mean, going our own paths is a dead end.
Would anyone else like to share their thoughts, observations?
All right. Thank you.
Would you like to say something? Here we go.
Just, I do like our sanctuary here and better than theirs. But I love the energy when we're together. There is a really, really good energy.
Yes. And so... I will say that Namaste has told me that when we go there, it heightens their energy as well.
Yeah, it's really good. It's really good.
Yes.
Is there talk of us giving up our sanctuary?
I think we have to be open. I don't see any path that that makes sense, but I think it's important that everything be on the table. But I don't see a way of doing it any other way, personally.
You okay?
We're not selling the property.
No, we will never sell the property. We are so fortunate. It's been paid for for many years ago. And so there's no way that we would ever have to do that. I wanted to answer one question about the ministers working. They are entitled to one week a month off. So... And then we always have a spare ministers, like we have been doing, to come in and take that Sunday. So that's really not a problem there. I think that was it mostly.
Is everyone complete? Anyone else want to add anything?
Okay. Let's go to the next slide. And what we're going to be doing is exploring unification. And there are really only three forms of unification here. I can think of one more, and that would be partnership. One is rebirth. That would be kind of staying on our own and trying to reinvent ourselves, which doesn't... Yeah. Then we have adoption. Adoption is generally when there's a stronger one taking over a weaker one. And we are really pretty much same size. We're very... Size-wise, it's a good match. And then there's marriage, which is, in likelihood, what we're going for is a kind of a marriage. The ICU is what we are without doing anything, because we're living on life support, which is volunteers, and it just really isn't sustainable. So let's go to the next slide. And okay, here's a marriage of two churches. And look what we have. We're about the same size. We have a comparable mission. That was one of the first things I discovered. Our mission statements has different words than theirs does, but they're saying the same thing. We have mutually beneficial complementary strengths and assets. And I think after the experience we've had with our collaboration so far, there's not a question in my mind that we're a good fit with enhancing our strengths and our complementary assets. We are similar in size. And our health and financials are probably about the same, too. Neither one of us really can afford to pay even a part-time minister a reasonable salary. And a united vision and a new... We have an opportunity for a new leadership configuration. So let's go to the next chart. Okay. The goal is not to have a church where everyone knows everybody. That doesn't scale. The point is to have a church where everyone is known, seen, and heard. And I can say that because, I think because of our adventure in faith, we have a couple of people that have stepped up. And their whole thing is to make sure they meet and greet everyone that comes in, that we all are seen and heard, is part of what makes the love and the community and the connection so wonderful here. So next slide. Okay. Coming together is the beginning. We're not... We're only talking about exploring it, but that is really only the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. I feel good about the possibilities with Namaste. And we're going... I'm going to suggest that we continue exploring that. So if you come to the next slide, now we're getting down to the real, how is this all going to happen? Well... And I'm going to jump back and forth between two slides, John. I may say next slide and go back to this one. So we're going to toggle between this one and the other one. As you can see, what we're suggesting now, and we're not going to do it until we have a memorandum of understanding or a resolution that we can present to the full membership with a special membership meeting, to make sure we have a buy-in or a consensus from both communities before we start our exploring. And that will come probably, I'm thinking January, maybe December, where we'll make that decision. So that then we're going to set up committees. And I think that's... So go to this... Go to the next slide. The committees are going to do a... We're going to set up committees in the exploration process. And the committees are going to set up a side-by-side comparison. There are many... There are five different committees, and then there's a leadership team in the center that's going to be coordinating everything. So they're going to look at everything, and this is a partial list. Each committee will have maybe different items that they're going to have to really look at side by side, look at the assets, look at the liabilities, look at everything, and see where we can come together, where we might not. So go back to the other one. Yes, okay. So the exploration is going to be in... Those teams are going to be working. If you're... If you'd like to volunteer for the team, you can let me know. I'll let you know that those teams are going to be working fairly steadily, because we're going to take May, January, February, March. And we're hoping by April, we're going to start finding something that we might present. So there's going to be one vote to do the exploring. And then once all these committees come together and start looking for how this might look, you know, all those different things that we have to look at, then by April, we start doing, identifying how it might look. And May or June, we're hoping there might be then that second membership meeting, where there will probably be two votes, because it isn't a given that Bobby comes, Reverend Bobby. Reverend Bobby, the minister is employed by the congregation. They are not technically a member of the congregation. They're an employee. Bobby always points this out, says, "I am an employee." So we get to vote as to whether we want to have Bobby as our senior minister. And we would also get to vote on whether we want to do a unification with Namaste. That's big stuff. Take a big, deep breath. Okay. And then even after we make that... The goal is maybe August. We separate, we stop meeting separately, and we start meeting together all the time. And the integration is going to be going ongoing. This is... This isn't, "Well, you turn the switch and it's done." No, there's a lot of moving pieces in here that have to be played. But we're hoping that by May or June, we may have something to actually present for the congregation to vote on. So let's go to the next slide. And we kind of looked at that one, so we can go the next one beyond that. Oh, the challenges. You've probably already thought of some of these. I've had people come up, "Oh, we are going to have a morning meeting." Yes, oh, mm, and what is our name going to be? And, you know, are we going to use this facility? I think we are, but I think that question needs to be able to be open, even though I don't see another solution other than coming here. Traditions, culture, finance. I mean, there's a lot to discuss on finance. And there's... We may be getting a lawyer. We may be getting, you know, I don't know what we're going to get into, but we're willing to do this carefully, mindfully, and ethically, and with love and guidance. Let's go to the next slide. This shows you what we're proposing. We have already started talking to some of the potential members of these various committees. We're not ready to announce them publicly, because we're still finalizing and we're still making sure that everyone has been... The board has made this... Come with a suggested slate of people to go into these committees. Each committee will have an equal number from Namaste and an equal number from Seal Beach. There were times when I was communicating with Reverend Susan, who's their president, and Bobby, and I wanted to add another one on our side. And we had to get permission from them, that they would be able to add another person on their side, so that we have equal representation. These committees are going to be on the care group model, so they will be four to 10 people. We won't want more than 10, because 10 gets too much for this kind of small group stuff now. So what you have in the middle is the transition leadership team. And they are the ones that are going to come up with a transitional mission and vision. Not one we're going to keep, but one we're going to use as we're going through this process. Then once we unify and we are one, then we will come up with our own new. So you can see, we have cultural integration, which is how do we integrate our spiritual cultural communities? You know, we have soul sisters. We have a book club. We have Zoom mingle. They have a grief group... Grief group. Thank you. That was just not going to come out of my mouth. And they also have a Wednesday night program. And they have a seven o'clock morning prayer get-together. So we each have different things. And think about what we're going to have when we come together, because it'll all be on the same plate. I get excited when I think of the possibilities that we have coming before us. So governance is going to be looking at the bylaws and the board configuration and how is that going to be going forward. And, you know, I can make up stories, but basically, this is all stuff to explore. And there's a lot to explore in each one of these. Finances is going to be a big one. And we might even, I think, add one more committee, which would be fundraising and marketing, because I think that might be one we want to have. In our discussions, we put it as a focus group attached to finances, because we felt that was something that was important and that wasn't on there. And so we just sort of left it in there. Then assets and facilities. And we want to get a clear... We don't know what they own over where they're renting. I think a lot... I don't know how much of the IT stuff is theirs. And they have an office. I don't know how much of their furniture is theirs. And we have a lot of IT equipment. And, oh my goodness, you know, there's just going to be a lot going on in that committee. And administrative, yes. Floran and Janice can tell you what that's like. They've both sat in that seat. There's a lot involved there. And we have three or four people that are right now sharing all those duties. And it really needs... It will... I think it will be easier with one person. And then, I think I got them all. Okay. So all those committees are going to be meeting throughout probably January, February, maybe March, and collaborating with the leadership team. All of the information will go into, I believe, the leadership team. And this is a work in process. This is a, I would call it, the rough draft. I don't think anybody's ever done this before. And in fact, our new visitor, who has moved here from Florida, said, "Boy, when you get this done, you need to let other people know what to... What these possibilities are and how this can work." And so we're moving forward. I'm going to say it. Moving forward, trusting in the process. I don't know about you, but so far, everything we have done, spirit has come back with a resounding yes. I mean, even my slide presentation was definitely helped, because Gina had an appointment... Gina Overholt had an appointment with Bobby, because she's renewing her reinsta- Reinstating her practitioner license. And they got to talking. And she said, "Gina, you should get together with Marjorie." And she did. And, oh my goodness, this lady knows so much more about IT. And she's also really good at keeping me more on point. And this is a much better presentation because we got together on Friday and Saturday. And so that's just a small piece of what can... So many things. I am just in awe of the process that we have been in. And I just... It just feels good. It just feels good. So, next slider. Okay. So this is phase one of the exploration. It is... We are going to planning to have... And I'm not sure if they've set in concrete how they're going to be developed, but both Reverend Bobby and Reverend John are going to be having small groups with question and answers so as we move through this process. We want to be transparent. We want to be honest. And at this point, the problem is, before we explore, I don't really have a lot of answers because I can make up stories, but they just be stories. So it is... The intention is to keep everybody informed. And the resolution... Memorandum of Understanding or the resolutions is going to be the first thing that you will probably see out of this process. That will be the door opening the process. Then we have the working teams. And we've... Basically, what the board does, we try to look at people and look at their skills and their talents and find people that fit in each group. I bet you probably wouldn't be able to guess which one Gina... Which one Janice and Floran are on. I'm letting the cat out of the bag, but... They're the ones that know what happens. So we've identified them. When we get them finalized, we will make a document. Janice has already got a rough draft of that up so that you'll know who from Namaste and who from Seal Beach is on each committee. And just a part of wanting to be transparent and very open about what we're doing. The work teams will work together and identify objectives, scope with transition, and communicate with the transition team. And they'll begin identifying strategies. It's not easy to live in the mystery. We are always living in the mystery. If you read Science of Mind this morning, it was all about everything has an expiration date. Nothing lasts forever. And I just want to read the quote. Reverend John, if you've got your waves of joy? He had a quote from John Campbell... Joseph Campbell, excuse me. "We must be willing to let go of the life we planned so as to have the life that is waiting for us." And that feels like where we are now. It's not going to... You know, it's not going to be the same. Things are going to change. I don't know how they're going to change, but I know they're going to change. But things change all the time. It doesn't just change now because we're here. It's always changing. It's just right now, they're kind of right blatant in front of our face. So let's go to the last one. And the loss... We're not losing anything, actually. We're changing. But it feels like we're losing. It may feel like we're losing... I don't know what we're losing, but the denial, "I can't believe we have to do this," you know? Can't we fix it? Reduce the budget? Pay something? Yeah, we've already tried all of that, gang. We are there. There's no more that can cut. We've got volunteers doing most of the work now. Anger. I like it the way it is. I feel betrayed. It will be something... It becomes something I don't know. Well, I don't think so. When we got together October 9th and November 6th, did you feel like you didn't know? It felt like a family reunion to me. "I'm sad I'm losing my church." Well, no, we're not losing the church. We're joining and unifying and getting... Opening ourselves to the immense possibilities we have of working together with Namaste. Acceptance. Yay. I embrace the new reality. The new reality is, life has changed. People are not coming to church like they used to. We don't have as many people. We have another center that's, what, four or five miles from us? Or less, I don't know. It's not very far. And we have an opportunity to imagine something greater than what we have now. Imagine a something that has more energy, that has more vitality, that has more spiritual opportunities, more classes, more ways of giving to the community. I mean, it just expands beyond my imagination. So now you all have a card. If you'd like... If you have a question? Gina, can you pick up the questions? Thank you. Do we have to find and approve a minister? At this point, we will have to... There will be some kind of a voting process on a senior minister. I don't know at this point whether that will be Bobby or somebody else. My guess is it will probably be Bobby. Reverend Bobby, excuse me. Oh, how do we increase tithings when members don't attend services? And this is a good question. And this is what the financial or the fundraising group is going to be looking at. And part of what happens, we have a... We have a lot of... We have new people coming in. And there will be more people coming in, I think, when we join together. And it takes them a while to come up to giving at a more substantial level. So that's part of that. And the transition team will decide whether we want... Whether they want to put up another minister. I don't see us doing a candidating process. A candidating process is... We don't... Seal Beach does not have the resources to go into a candidating process because we cannot offer a minister anything close to even a part-time salary. Okay? So I'm skirting that question. And that is something we can explore in the transition teams. None of this is set in concrete. That's why our building is on the lookout as well. Everything needs to be looked at and examined so that we know why we're keeping the building, not that we just have to keep it. We know why we're keeping the building. Can we have a... Have mutual services going forward as a soft merging? Oh, okay. I think what I'm hearing is, can we have merged services? That's pretty hard to do at this point. However, we already have. I've invited them to come to the 11th... December 11th workshop on the Seven Dimensions of Wellness. They've invited us to go to the candle lighting service on the 18th. And the practitioners are already working out a way to have a Christmas party together with Namaste. Namaste practitioners. So we're working on those things. It's pretty hard to do while we're still operating as separate entities. Okay. Yes?
But because of the fact that they are at different times, everybody is welcome.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you. Because we are at different times, just like Maria was saying. She's already going to both services. And I know Eileen Davis is also going to both services. And we sometimes have people from Namaste coming here. So feel free. You know where they are now. They're at 4:30. And feel free to go and join them and see what they are... And experience that energy that they have. Senior partnership. We also have two congregants. Okay, I may have to get some clarity on that one. I would love to have... See more... See more both churches move, merge. The idea is it's contagious? Yes, okay. The idea of coming together as one... I love the idea of coming together with... As one with Bobby as our minister. Now, I have one... I may ask clarification for... Did somebody write in red? "It sounds like I chose a senior pastor to share." If we chose a senior pastor to share, could we also have two congregations? I think the whole idea is that we believe that there is just one power, one presence, one energy, and that's God. And that we are all expressions of God. We are all one. And to try to remain separate, at this point, doesn't really make sense to me. I think that's what I thought of initially was, "Hmm, maybe we could share Bobby." But I don't... That doesn't feel real... That doesn't feel sustainable to me. We're literally looking for sustainability. And the sustainability really comes when we merge everything and double our position, if you will, by... Because there... I think we're very, very similar economically and membership-wise. Yes, June?
Well, I understood last week where Bobby's making minimal, 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 if anything.
Yes.
So for her to work twice, for her to work in Namaste and here and part in anything, I don't know if that's...
Yes. Bobby is not making... Is not making pittance. She's, in my opinion, volunteering. And she's getting tired. So this is a way... Yeah. It really... It's the coming together and putting our finances together that allows us to give, if we have Reverend Bobby as the minister, at least a part-time salary. Yes?
Can I assume that choosing... Can I assume that choosing a mutually appreciated time, since their time is different and our time is different, is on the agenda?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And please know that the reason they're at 4:30 is because they're meeting at the Lutheran Church, which meets in the morning, so it's not available in the morning. And that's why they got a very good price on their rent because they're using it when they don't need it. So I... Yes. That will definitely be addressed. We often say, "What are the sacred cows?" And I think the sacred cows for us is meeting in the morning and meeting here at this church. I don't know what their sacred cows are, but we'll find as we move forward. And what I have to do is trust in the process. Everything we've done so far has been, yes, 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 successful, successful, successful. We had 74 people participating in Adventurine faith when we only have 50 or so people here on a Sunday. It's just amazing. Maria?
And how many people attended the service?
Oh, yes, okay. I'll just review that. In October 9th, when we had... They came over here, we had 94 people. We usually have 50 to 60, okay? When we went there, they had 110. Now, we did have food to bring a few more people. I'm going to guess we'll see... As a combined service, we'll probably have 100 people here instead of our 50 to 60. And that just... You know, that's just so much more energy. When I bring our energy together, we explore it exponentially.
But I think that's going to bring people here. That's attractive energy.
Yes, absolutely. Sylvia?
If we remain here, the parking situation is... We don't have a very big parking lot. Will we research renting someplace else for parking?
Well, what we have to do is let go of the limited thinking and trust that when we look at facilities, that's one of the things they're going to look at. I am happy to say that when they came here and we had 94 people, nobody complained about the parking.
Just as a matter of information, we have been in touch with the police department, and they are going to forgive us of the parking restrictions on the streets during our service time. So they're going to overlook parking restrictions.
Divine right order, y'all.
It's all in divine right order. It's just... I just keep going, yes, yes, yes. All right, then. Are we ready to...
I have a comment.
Okay.
I just read an article recently about how... I think I had been focused on, there's our two churches, and we're talking about our community. But this is happening all over the country. A lot of very successful murders just to survive and keep the philosophy and the faith going. Because when I think of CSL not existing in a few years, it makes me just sad. I want this thing to continue. I want my own son to continue to grow in his spiritual development and having this church, this place, and figuring out how to sustain it and grow it, I think, is very exciting.
All right. If we're complete, then, let me just close with a... Oh, thank you, God. I am so grateful for this center. I am so grateful for Namaste. I'm so grateful for Reverend John and Reverend Bobby. And I just recognize and know that each and every one of us are an expression of this loving presence. And as we move through this process, I know that each of us is sourced and supported by this loving presence as we move through things that may seem a little uncomfortable and find solutions that work for everyone. And so I absolutely know that this is all in divine right order. And I am so grateful that that is the truth that I release this saying. And so it is.